Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council and a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the successor agency to the former Madera Redevelopment Agency. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Andrew Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Steve Montez.
Here.
Councilmember Cici Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Derek Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Santo Garcia. Councilmember Donald Hawley.
Present.
Thank you so much, Zelda. I believe we have with us this evening to lead us in the invocation Pastor Mark Unger from First Baptist. Oh, right up there. If you'll stand with me, please.
Yeah, this, he does, he does mean all rise this time. That was great. That was great. That was, got your moment. Got me. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege that we have to come to this city council meeting and, and ask by your grace, your hand in these things that are going on. There's something going on with union negotiations. There's other things on the agenda. And we pray, Lord, that your hand would be on this city council and the people here for wisdom, that of each of these people that you have brought forward to be representative of the people in their districts, that they would be true representatives of the people, regardless of their personal political affiliations, men and women who fear God, men and women of truth, men and women who hate dishonest gain, and we just thank you, Lord, and ask that you would give them wisdom in deciding the things that should and shouldn't happen in this city going forward. And we praise you, Lord, for the Madera PD who are here tonight, the way they protect us and serve us every day, for our fire, for our first responders. We're thankful for each one that makes this city tick. And we would just look up again at that sign, "In God We Trust," and we would remember the Psalm that says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Respecting all faiths present, I pray in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen."
Thank you very much, Pastor Mark. If you'll join me in the pledge, please. Freddie Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving into the approval of the agenda, is there anything that the council would like to add or change on the existing agenda? If not, I'll call for action.
So moved to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public comment, the first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for the members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearings, hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. It seems like we have a few people that want to speak, so please.
Good evening. My name is Kay Rhodes. I have a business here in the city of Madera at 201 South Pine Street. I've been here many times in the last three years, and I received a letter in the mail dated the seven, seven nine nineteen. It says, "Kay Rhodes, I read the article about the city council, what the city council has done to the citizens of our town. My husband and I are behind you. Is there anything you can do to help us lower our water bill? There is just the two of us living here in our home. Every month, our water bill goes up. We are on a fixed income, both retired. I don't know the steps to get the water bill reduced. I feel the city council is corrupt. They need to go away. Thank you, concerned citizen Patty." And I'm not going to say her last name, but I have the letter and I have the envelope that I would like to turn over to. The person lives on Granada. I'm a private citizen, and of course, my name has been in the paper, and my big concern, like many others, is it's not just the water bill, it's the utility bill. They say water, we all call it a water bill, but it's sewer, it's garbage, it's everything. It's gone up so much. And here's another, people are writing me about it, like I can do something about it. And I want all the people here to know, it's not the workers we're against, it was the administration that was so top-heavy. And I think the council has done a lot to eliminate a lot of those, but they've got a long way to go. But all of you, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name's John Dalrymple. I'm with CEA. We, Mayor, we chose not to have a whole series of folks come and speak. I'll be the only one speaking, so please, if you could keep that in mind.
Of course.
So I'm here representing the mid managers group and the general bargaining unit. You can see there's a whole folks are here. Now, why are we here? I have a question, if I could, just to help frame this. Can anybody here who knows somebody who's thinking of, who wants to leave city service, raise your hand? Who's looking for a job someplace else? All right? That's what's happening here. That's why we're here. Because we looked around, we could not find another city council willing to jeopardize the integrity of public services that the community depends on by enforcing a three-year wage freeze. You understood that this was bad public policy five years ago, when you did a compensation study, and you found even looking at the PERS, even looking at the, at the healthcare plan here, that you were so far behind, you know, that you were not recruiting, you were not retaining, you made some, you gave a fairly good wage increase. But yet, you are now going back to the past, you know, three-year wage freeze. You're already slipping behind from the gains you made five years ago. Let me give you an example. Permit tech, we looked at some of the same jobs, cities that you looked like in your latest classification study for the bosses. Permit tech, you look at the median average, eight thousand less than the median for a permit technician who works here than the average in these other cities. Eight thousand less a year. That's not a little amount. Now, you could do a two-year wage freeze on top of that. What's that going to do to these families? We know no place else, no other city council, willing to jeopardize the welfare of these families like you are with a three-year wage freeze. We've just had a pastor come and talk about, you know, and, and frame this meeting and the discussions of attendance of a faith, of which you could go down the list of all these faiths. But it's essential to these faiths, protecting the integrity of the family, respecting the dignity of work. We can't start a meeting with a prayer and then not our actions, then act off that prayer? You have to ask yourself, what are your actions when we take a prayer like that? Is it to destroy the integrity of your families, of your employees? That's what your proposal will do. It'll be a choice between, do I pay the rent, or do I provide the kind of tutoring my challenged child has to have to be successful? That's the choices you're forcing on them. No other city is. Turlock, four percent raise. Delano, four percent raise. The average rate in the area, at least two percent. But they all have the same challenges you have. Somehow, they're making a decision to value the best of what they have to give to the community, and you're choosing not to. Now, we want to get this settled. We've made an extraordinary offer. We said, "Look, we're willing to go to eight percent on PERS. We're willing to do twenty percent on our healthcare plan. Let's put, let's put together a strategy to do that. Let's go to interspace bargaining. Let's not have the conflict with bargaining that's been characterized by the city. You know, let's figure out a long-range plan so we can play apples to apples when looking at other compensation of other cities." No response to that kind of thinking from your, from your team. We need to do something different. You just saw all the hands here. You're losing people every day. You lost one today? You're going to lose another one this week. You know, and one the week after that, and one the week after that. What does that mean in terms of the integrity of your public services? They drop. And we just had a sister here talking about the, the water rates. You know, you can't provide the services that people want, charge them what you need if you keep turning over employees. So we ask you to do something different. Let's change the tone of bargaining. Let's move towards an agreement. And, and this group's willing to do it. They've taken steps that I very rarely see them bargaining. So, you know, we're going to leave today. We will have a bargaining session in two weeks, and we hope we see some new direction from the council. But in closing, I want to mention just one thing. We've had a instance this recent, yesterday, I don't want to name the city council member, but there's a lot of people upset because of how they being approached at their job and, and felt, being felt, they're being challenged and treated with disrespect. So as we go through this process, I would encourage the council to, in their daily actions, interactions, if you do have interactions with the staff, to do so with respect and appreciation, and, and because it doesn't help us reach an agreement if people are angry because their leaders appear in their daily actions, to not respect what they're doing for the community. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalrymple.
Wait, come on, where are you guys going? I'm not done yet. I won't ask for a polygraphic test for looking for another job.
Employees.
Oh, no, no, no polygraphic test for the people, you know, who want, who want to quit this job. Okay.
I'd just like to let the record show that Councilman Garcia has joined us.
First of all, thank you very much for Madera Tribune, for our union leaders, you know, article. Okay. Grand jury report hasn't been on city's website yet. I don't know why. I did not contribute anything to your grand jury report. Otherwise, you know, HR would have been half of that. All right. City workers need pay raise, COLA, cost of living adjustment. Okay? Please, you know, tie it with the PERS. If we leave PERS, if we quit PERS, believe it or not, it will be very good for everybody, for them as well. So when PERS starts or started, so employer and employee contributed equally. So now, you know, employer will be contributing more. So if you, if you think that, you know, people at the bottom would lose, let them lose. There are other programs for them, food stamps and so on, and medical, you name it. But at the, you know, later on, before going broke or bankrupt, it's better to quit now. Why do you want to keep on making investment on a dead horse? Do what city of Sierra Valley did, please, do that. Okay. And please tell me a single private employer here in the area which provides these kind of benefits, what city of Madera provides. One employer here. Doctor's office, as you name it, private employer I'm talking. Okay, then, in the article, you know, there was another thing, hundred and twenty people, hundred and twenty employee out of three hundred are skilled workers. So please define skilled worker for me. Are they plumbers, electricians? So if you, if you, you know, look at the skills, housewives have multiple skills, you know, without any kind of licensing. Okay, then, no word from union on grand jury report. Why not? It's about them, it's about their executives. Okay. So PERS, any question, PERS, please, you know, get out of PERS, so before, you know, we get in trouble, all of us. So that's about it. Thank you very much. You have a good one.
Good evening, my friends. Ramontoya, twelve. Oh, I don't have to do that anymore. Thanks for the grand jury report. Wow. Um, oh, where do we start? Well, the thing is, let me start off with your quote, Mr. Mendelin, on Dave Thule. This is, I, and I quote, "It has been an honor and a privilege to work with someone as professional and dedicated as David. His passion for Madera and vision to keep us moving forward is exceptional." The mayor said, "For almost twenty-five years, David has helped steer and guide that ship that this is Madera, as he dedicated most of his life to well-being, safety, and prosperity of the community from a position that is mostly a thankless job." Gone. Dave Merchant, gone. Tim, gone. City of Tern, don't remember him? When my kids came in, they go, man, he looks like a mob boss dad. He looks at me so rude, mean. And that grand jury report validated it. Do it while the iron is hot. Do your job. Do your job, city council. You guys ran last year going door to door, and you guys heard these same complaints, a revolving door of water rates, ex, water rates, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar salary, thanks to Mr. Mendelin. Okay? Do your job. The iron is hot. Who's going to censor this man? Or are we going to continue to glorify, immunize, insulate, and orbit your ego? It is your job to stop this. Even if you don't have the votes, you're going to figure out who's voted no. So we can use that and go door to door while this individual's going, running for reelection, board of supervisor, X, Y, and Z. I'm going to follow that person, say, hey, you know what? He voted not to censor. He or she voted not to stop Andy's shenanigans. Where's Rob Poitras? I wanted to ask Mr. Rodriguez. He did a commercial for him during his running of, against Ana Caballero. Where is he? I quote Mr. Rodriguez, "I trust Mr. Poitras." Well, Mr. Poitras had a lot to do with these shenanigans, okay? And as I stand parallel to Mr. Boyle, he was off. Welcome back. You missed the last, these last two weeks, you, you could watch Andy dodge the cameras. It is working. That grand jury report validated these sixty-seven signatures that I turned in, wanted you out prior to your ninety-six thousand dollar tax lien. And when you gave me eye contact a couple nights ago, I forgot this cell phone when I was charging my car. Every time I'm charging my car, I'm over there showing your ninety-six thousand dollar tax lien. And as you do the sign of the cross, you still make me, you cause nausea.
Do not question my faith, sir.
I will not question your faith, but I question your motives, and you were relentless these past few years on passing policy and procedures hurting my neighbors. And that's why I'm here, a voice for the voiceless. You voted three weeks ago, two a month ago, more CFD taxes, and you don't even pay your own. Now, how is that ethical? Do your job, city council. I'm here for my neighbors. I'm here for those future neighbors you guys jobbed off of Tozer. And in a few years, you guys are going to be, oh, thank you for your service, I want your vote, we're going to change this city. Well, you know what? The buck stops here. It needs to stop. And that grand jury report, just, you know, and, and I think it's more than attorney, I think it's more than district attorney, I think attorney general needs to get involved. Three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar salary? This is not the city of Bell, this is the city of Madera. Do you think I want to come over here and, and say? I would like to. Actually, I am. Let me, let's scratch this. The Madera Police Department on Fourth of July did a wonderful job in our neighborhood. They were on their motorcycles, X, Y, and Z, catching people with illegal fireworks. They did an awesome job. And you know what? They were really nice to my neighbors. My neighbors came up and say, hey, you know what? The guys on cops, the girls on cops, they were cool. They didn't ticket me. Okay? They did a wonderful job. Pastor Gunter, you get to know him. He's a really nice guy. And you know what? He can say whatever he wants, because he's, he's felt a pain that nobody, I don't wish this upon my worst enemy. He's a Gold Star father, and I bet you guys didn't know that. Because you guys don't know how to have a conversation with average Joes, because that's why you're in the same shenanigans, you're with the, the people outside. Just have a candid conversation. We can all agree and disagree, but don't come over here preaching, doing the sign of the cross, and then not paying your own taxes.
Your three minutes are up, sir.
Thank you.
Okay? And please, bring facts, Mr. Montoya, not rhetoric.
I'll bring your tax liens.
There's nothing more than rhetoric. You use this to grandstand, and it's nothing more than a stage for you to, to give us your opinion. We've heard your opinion.
Stage for me, this is the greatest country in the world.
Your three minutes are up.
And this is why this is the greatest country in the world, because of candid conversations like this. Thank you.
There are candid conversations. There are plenty of candid conversations.
Council, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that you let the speakers...
I'm finished. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Please come forward.
Hello, everybody. My name is Eddie Block. Everybody else talks about their business. I am a journalist. I work for America's Voice News, Frontline America with Ben Berkwam. And I'm probably the only one in the building in the area with a White House official press pass. I'm here to talk to you guys about the fireworks. You can laugh, Mr. Chadri, all you like, but I have an official White House press pass. What I'm here, I want to just talk about the Fourth of July and the fireworks, the illegal fireworks. And Mr. Montoya, last time you're here, I agree with you, it's bad, but we shouldn't ban the safe and sane fireworks. But we should ban is the illegal ones, which they are. But instead of having a little fine, we, what, thousand dollars last year? They're still going off everywhere. Why don't we put a fine on there where people have to sit in jail for the illegal ones? Not the safe and sane ones, because those help out our community. The Elks benefit from it. The Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts of America benefit from it. Those are all charities. We only let charities make money off of that. So don't hurt the, the good people for the bad. But we need to do it, because the other night, I had some little kid shoot a firework over my head and almost caught me on fire. So that needs to stop. Now, on to this other stuff that I've been hearing today with the unions and stuff. Ms. Rhodes, you come all the time, and you stay for the meetings, and I appreciate that. Then the union workers come in here, and they complain for two seconds, and they leave. How is that going to help our city? Ms. Rhodes is complaining about the bills being too high on our water and our utilities. These people want money. How are we going to lower the bills or lower our bills for water and then give people raises? We need to work together and figure this out. But when people like that just come in here and complain, and then you walk out the room instead of staying for the whole meeting, that's wrong. You guys need to stay here and work with this city. Don't just come here and complain. When I was younger, I was taught if you have a problem, you come with a solution. Don't just expect everybody else to do it. So we need to come together. What the city council has done in the past, they've made a lot of mistakes. They're still making mistakes. We're humans. And I'm not sticking up for them, because I have a lot of disagreements with these people. But we need to come together and work together. We're Maderans. We need to come together as Maderans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? See none, I'll close public comment and move, move into the first item on our agenda, which is our workshop, item A1. This is a workshop on LAFCO, which is the Local Agency Formation Commission. Mr. Boyle, looks like you're going to lead us off.
Councilmembers, our first item tonight would be a workshop on the Local Agency Formation Let's begin. Let's start by asking the question, what is LAFCO? LAFCO is established in each county by the Knox-Nesbit Act of nineteen sixty-three. Within that act, the state legislator provided the power to regulate, let me rephrase that, within that act, the state legislature bestowed upon LAFCO the power to regulate local government boundaries. LAFCO serves as a legislature's watchdog over cities and special districts, and it has three main purposes. The first would be to discourage urban sprawl. The second would be to encourage orderly governmental boundaries, and the third would be to preserve open space and prime agricultural farmlands. To achieve these goals, LAFCO has planning and regulatory powers. In terms of planning powers, LAFCO, LAFCO's plan by adopting revised city and special district spheres of influence, and we'll talk more about spheres of influence. In terms of regulatory power, LAFCO's regulate by reviewing and approving or denying proposals to change governmental boundaries, typically via the annexation process when it comes to city activities. Processes are outlined by the Cortezi-Knox-Hurtsburg Local Government Reorganization Act of two thousand. LAFCO is not a county department or a county agency, it's not a city department or agency, nor is it a special district or other governmental formation such as a JPA or a CFD. Who is LAFCO? LAFCO is five members of the various discretionary bodies within the county. There are plus one at-large member, J. Carl Graham currently serves as the at-large member. Mayor Madellin is the city of Madera's representative. Wassim Ahmed is the city of Chowchilla's representative. And there are two county of Madera commissioners on LAFCO, that would be right now, Max Rodriguez and Tom Wheeler. The executive officer for LAFCO is David Braun, and at his disposal, he has part-time counsel as well as part-time administrative assistance. What are LAFCO's powers?
I'm sorry, Mr. Braun. Councilman Gallegos has a question.
Yes.
Mr. Braun, if you go back to the last slide, how come the county has two main people and the city only has one?
That's a good question, council member. I'm not sure who, what, or the discretion that goes into the formation of the individual members. So I can't, I can only answer your question with, I'm not sure. I believe that Mr. Braun is here right now, the executive officer. If it would be okay with you, I'd like to ask him forward to answer that question.
And while he comes up to the podium, on this slide here where it says the city alternate is vacant, it's, it's not vacant, it's filled by Mayor Pro Tem Montez.
Thank you. City Council, Dave Braun, LAFCO Executive Officer. The question was how, who is appointed to LAFCO? And LAFCO is made up of two board members, two county board of supervisors, and then two city members. And because Madera County only has two cities, there's always one representative from Madera and one from Chowchilla. So there's two county representatives, two city representatives, and then a public member that's not a public official. So that, there's a, it's a five-member commission, and then each of those three areas, we have an alternate, so if the main member can't attend, then the alternate can attend for them.
But city of Chowchilla doesn't get an alternate.
Well, the alternate rotates, because there's only one alternate, and there's two cities. Every year, it rotates. One year, it'll be a city of Madera councilman, the next year, it'll be a city of Chowchilla.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Moving on, let's talk about LAFCO powers. The state law prohibits LAFCO from making any direct land use decisions. Those are retained by the local, local agencies, that'd be the city, the county, and the like. So whereas the city still has powers in terms of land use, subdivisions, development review, and the like, LAFCO decisions, though, do indirectly impact, impact that development process. LAFCO is required to establish a sphere of influence, and the sphere is a probable physical boundary or service area for the local agency like the city. LAFCO also conducts a municipal services review, or an MSR, which includes the updating of that sphere. In terms of our, our MSR, the most recent one was completed in October of two thousand eighteen, and it includes not just the city within the, the MSR, it also includes the surrounding special districts... not just the city within the MSR, it also includes the surrounding special districts and county special service areas. Within that MSR, the city's sphere is updated. Also within the MSR, the determinations were made that the city would be able to provide services to that sphere of influence area, along with many other findings. Within the sphere update, it includes, as I noted, maintenance districts and county service areas in proximity to the city. So that would include Madera Acres, the Parksdale CSA, Parkwood, as well as the City of Madera within that overall analysis within the MSR. And they're each looked at individually. The sphere of influence was updated at that time, and it was expanded. Within that expansion, there's a better alignment with the 2009 general plan. I would note that the green areas were added to the sphere, whereas the red areas I've highlighted within the map, those areas were removed from our sphere of influence. So the Castalina Village Reserve, as well as the Village D Reserve, were added into the sphere, and the industrial lands along the ATSF tracks were added to our sphere using the railroad tracks as a logical boundary. We talk about the city limits versus the new sphere of influence. This is our updated city limits. It includes all of the areas that have been annexed recently and along with the new sphere of influence. We'd note that the point of adding this slide is to give the council an understanding of the relationship between the areas the city currently serves in comparison to the sphere of influence, which is that anticipated service area the city, that has been recently been established. Why? Why reasons for boundaries, spheres of influence, and the like are city limits? There are several reasons. The first one would be an assignment of physical space that defines a city's geographic identity. The second would be defining tax powers over those certain areas. City taxation, our sales taxes versus county areas with their particular sales tax revenues. It also determines which government has corporate powers or authority over a certain area, and along with that comes our land use planning authority. It also helps define public infrastructure needs in terms of our utility master plans. If there's an intent for us to serve the sphere in the future, we should be looking at that in terms of our long-range master plans. And in terms of housing, it also helps us to identify housing needs by identifying property within the housing element to help us meet our housing needs now and into the future. Now, the council has looked at a couple of annexations most recently. One is identified here within a pre-zoning of 20 acres that were near the intersection of Ellis and D Streets. And that pre-zoned 20 acres, ultimately, that 20 acres is now part of the city limits of the City of Madera. We also took action recently on another annexation at Stadium Road and Almond Avenue, where additional 20 acres were added from part of a county island. When we look at annexations, there are five, or perhaps six, steps within that process of annexation. The first step would be an initiation of proceedings, and that takes form in the form of an application, and that's usually either by, well, it is either by petition of the voters, where landholders petition LAFCO for annexation, or by resolution of the city council, which accompanies an annexation that's sponsored by the city itself. After initiation of that application, LAFCO then reviews that process, reviews that application, and ultimately schedules it for a public hearing, and within that public hearing prepares a staff report and distribution of report. Mayor Madellin, acting on that, that board takes action along with the other four members through a voting process. The public hearing is held as a third step, and that LAFCO board can approve or conditionally approve or deny the use. There are cases when no public hearing is actually necessary. Three cases would be when an area is uninhabited, or has 12 or fewer individuals, or where there's no written request for a hearing by the affected agency, or when all landowners have provided a written consent. Protest proceedings occur from time to time, and protests have the following effect on that process. There are times when individuals who are within a proposed annexation area are not supportive of that annexation. An example that some council members that have sat on the dais for a time might recall the pre-zoning of the Parksdale area as a contentious process, which yet to be completed, but within that, there was some degree of opposition that came from the proposed, some of the residents that were proposed for annexation into the city. There are three real thresholds in terms of protest and what happens. If 50% or more of the registered voters within the proposed annexation area protest, then the annexation is terminated at that point in juncture. If there are protests received from between 25 and 50% of the registered voters, then a formal election is required to decide the outcome. And if protests are received from at least 25% of the number of owners of land, who also own at least 25% of the assessed value of the land, a formal election will be required to decide that outcome. So if there is sufficient protest, an election is held, and 50% or more in favor of that annexation is required in order to approve the annexation. The last step would be the completion and filing of the annexation. That occurs after LAFCO, and if applicable, the voters approve the boundary changes. And then the executive officer then files those changes with the Board of Equalization and with the county assessor, and all affected agencies are notified. The city receives a resolution from LAFCO, which essentially completes that annexation process. What's that look like with those two former annexations? Well, in the case of those 20 acres to the north side of the city, we had seven potential properties, and none of those properties contested that annexation. And although a public hearing was held in benefit of that annexation, that was approved with no opposition, and is now within the city limits. The second example would be the 20 acres that are at Stadium and Olive, pardon me, Almond. In that case, originally, there was a request by LAFCO to include those northern 20 acres of land, and they were pre-zoned in conjunction with the pre-zone for the southern 20 acres. Those ultimately were removed with consensus from consideration for annexation due to opposition of the property owner. Ultimately, those southern 20 acres of land are now part of the city. So you can see that the inner relationship between individuals in opposition, and in this case, they were removed in a small part, or at least partially, because of the improvements on the northern 20 acres of land. When we look at assessed values, the assessed value of that land was more than the assessed value of the southern 20 acres. So ultimately, that property owner essentially had the power to kill the annexation for all 40 acres. It was important that at least the 20 acres were approved as part of the annexation. Hence, the property was removed from consideration.
And if I may, Chris, and I'm just going to kind of give you a breather right now. I think you're doing a great job. But just to kind of put, excuse me, my two cents worth, sitting on the Board of LAFCO, sometimes we will have property owners that are in favor because they understand that now being annexed into the city, they're basically following by the city rules. And also in cases of utilities. So it would be city water, city services. It would also mean city police department, code enforcement, things of that nature. So where some people may see that as an advantage or a better way of what they've had it, others see it differently by way of, well, what do I do with my personal well? If I have a well, is the city going to allow me to continue to use that well? Or do I now have to abandon that well and tie into city services? Or I kind of like the way we, maybe for lack of a better term, are a little more carefree in the county with certain issues like code enforcement, as opposed to maybe a little more aggressive that the city is in. So we hear both sides. We understand completely. But of course, we want to move in the most advantageous way possible, not only for the city, but for the existing property owners, landowners, and then in some cases, or a lot of cases, the new residents coming into that particular area. Just thought I would throw that in.
In response to that, I would note that the city's policy has been, for some time, that education is probably the best approach. When we were going through the Parksdale process, a lot of those things come up. What will happen? What will happen to my pets? What will happen to my animals? Are you going to charge me to put in sidewalks and streetlights? And there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces of information that oftentimes are clouded or there's misinformation on the street. In the case of Parksdale and other applicable requests for annexation, the staff is prepared frequently asked questions, what we've released to the neighborhood in general, so that they can get an understanding in terms of what's grandfathered, what are the actual impacts that come to them upon annexation? Do they have to connect their well? Do they have to connect to sewer services? Will they be assessed for street improvements and the like? And that, sometimes, a bit of information helps go a long way in terms of the citizen understanding what is or isn't required as part of an annexation.
You're right. We've had a number of town hall meetings out in that particular area, Parkwood area, as well as the Parksdale area, and quite a few people showed up. And it was informative for both sides, for the residents to explain their position as residents, and then for us, as city and county, in conjunction, to explain the process. So you're right. Information is key as we move forward with annexation.
Very true. That said, Mayor Madellin, that completes my presentation on LAFCO. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them. And Mr. Braun is in audience as well, in case there's something specific for the executive director.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Any questions from council? Councilwoman Gallegos?
I do, Chris, and I don't know if this is just a general question. Let's say a property owner wanted to annex into the City of Chowchilla, and Chowchilla wanted them to annex in, but it comes to LAFCO, and again, you don't have the votes because it's just one in Chowchilla, and LAFCO says no. How does that work?
Well, if there's a single property owner who abuts to the city, then the process would look like this. Because they abut to the city, they can file application as an individual citizen. And then LAFCO has the important job of deciding whether additional parcels should accompany them in annexation. One of their, one of those responsibilities is to make sure that we have nice, clean boundaries, and so there aren't, we don't have those islands that we deal with today or peninsulas, so that the boundaries between county and city align. Such was the case with those 20 acres, where the real 10 of those acres were the subdivision that abutted to the city. But in order to have a nice, clean line, there were five additional parcels that were required by LAFCO to be included within that application for annexation. So if, so the answer to that question is, the applicant could make a formal application for annexation, and some parcels may or may not be added to that annexation area to provide for cleaner boundaries. But then ultimately, that would be, that'd follow those steps, where an application would be received by LAFCO. LAFCO would review and process that application, schedule it for public hearing. There wouldn't be any protest if it was a single resident who wished to annex. Then LAFCO analysis of the merits of that annexation would come to the LAFCO board for determination, and ultimately, it would be their discretionary authority whether to approve or disapprove of that annexation.
Okay, that still doesn't answer my question, because you showed us the opposite of it. But what I'm asking is, if the representative on LAFCO who's Chowchilla is saying, yes, we want this to happen, but again, that's one vote, because you only have one on the board, how does it really wait when you have two counties and one city? When the City of Chowchilla is saying yes, the applicant doesn't have the right, what are their rights if the Board of LAFCO is saying no?
Councilmember, when an item comes before the commission, the whole five-person commission reviews it. And although there's only one person from Chowchilla on the commission, once the commissioners open the meeting, they're, you know, supposed to take off their councilman hat or board of supervisors hat and put on their LAFCO hat.
It's nice that you say that, but I don't think that always happens.
Well, it probably doesn't always happen, but I think, I think the commissioners make an attempt to do that. And so if an item comes before the commission, even though there's only one person from Chowchilla, all five of the commissioners are really looking at it from state law as far as LAFCO is concerned. So that doesn't mean that just because there's one person from Chowchilla that they're only going to get one vote. They likely, if it meets the standards of annexation, if it's an orderly development, it's likely that the commission, the entire commission, would probably vote for it.
I just asked because there was no, there's not steps that you showed us for that. You showed us steps for if somebody protested against it, and the steps to take to, Mr. Boyle put it pretty clear with the election, and that the residents would decide if annexation in. But it's not, we didn't really have steps where if some, or an entity or a property owner wanted to annex, that the LAFCO commission really has the power and to say either yes or no. And there's no protest on their part.
And that really comes first. When an annexation is considered, before we even talk about protests, the LAFCO commission reviews it. And if it's just one parcel with one property owner who obviously wants to come in, if the commission votes approval, it's done. There's no protest.
Right.
The only time there's protest is if you have, well, what's called an inhabited annexation, where you have 12 or more registered voters, and then you get a situation where you have to have a hearing to allow people to protest the annexation.
Serving as a member of LAFCO, Councilwoman, I can tell you that I don't remember being a part of a 4-1 or a 3-2 vote, simply because it was a Chowchilla versus the county, or City of Madera versus Chowchilla. I think the board, in my five out of the last eight years, have done very, very well to represent the county as a whole, understanding that we take the same ethics test, we go to LAFCO conferences and understand what our role and responsibility is. And I, again, do not remember where there was misrepresentation or a lack thereof. I will share that the question has come up, and LAFCO is currently talking about possibly extending to a seven-member board. Right now, the City of Madera, we pay our fair share as members of LAFCO, as well as Chowchilla and the county, based on our budget. Through MCTC, it's based on population. So there is a formula there as to who gets seats at the table and what the cost is, and making sure that there is fair representation, if you will. And so, again, I think we're just scratching the surface, Dave. I think maybe Commissioner Wheeler or Ahmed maybe brought that up about Chowchilla having only one representative without an alternate, and making sure that we do have fair representation.
Yes. I think, well, as far as the seven-person commission, about half of the counties in the State of California have special district representation. In Madera County, we just have city and county, and then the public member. But like I say, about half of the counties in the state have special district representation, and so they get two members as well, and so that brings it to seven. The reason generally counties don't have that is because if the special districts want representation, they also have to pay to help fund LAFCO, and oftentimes, that becomes a sticking point.
I might add, there may be a situation where although there may be an abutting property owner who wishes to annex into the city, but there isn't a development proposal associated with that application, the city may not necessarily be supportive of that, especially if it's a larger parcel that's in agricultural production. Noting that logical growth, typically, our annexations would be a precursor to some type of development occurring in that area, either from a holistic perspective, where we expect a growth-inducing activity, such as a new school, to drive additional development pressures, and that provides more of an ease for the development community to annex into that area, or a similar situation like that. So since the city largely doesn't have an ag zone, there may be a case where we wouldn't be supportive of an activity like that. We'd like to see some driving rationale where we would... We'd like to see some, some driving rationale where we would, we would need to extend services to that use.
And we have, on a number of occasions, now, this is not through Lafco, through the city, approved, sometimes a county resident that wants city services, water and sewer. Again, not through Lafco, but it's not necessarily having to annex into the city, as there may be, again, an issue with a well, or something of that nature. Once again, not through Lafco. If we were approached by somebody in the county, a single parcel owner, if you will, that was asking for city services, we've done that a number of times.
Well, we have many parcels outside the city right now currently enjoy municipal services. Of the, the seven parcels that incorporated that 20-acre annexation, all, five of those parcels that were asked to accompany that annexation already had services in place as well. Lafco, though, does have a role associated with those out-of-service area connections. I'll allow David to speak to that.
Thank you.
Yes, Andy, we do have to approve, Lafco has to approve any what we call out-of-service connection. And most of those are done in-house. If it's a simple lot, for instance, it happens to a butt on a street that the city of Madera has water or sewer lines. Those are generally done in-house. As you may recall, I did bring, when the high school up there had a request to extend water and sewer, it was, I don't know, close to a mile, I think, up to the high school. I did bring that in front of the commission, because that was a, kind of an unusual one that I wanted the commission to see. But a lot of the, just one parcel, it, it's done in-house.
It's not brought before the, the board, is what I'm saying.
It's not, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Thank you for being here, I really appreciate you taking the time to do so. Lafco meets on the fourth Wednesday of every month, 6 o'clock, across the street on the fourth floor. Although we haven't met, we didn't meet last month. Any other questions of Mr. Boyle or Mr. Braun? I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who's excited about Lafco and may have a question for our staff or council. Gentlemen, thank you very much, I really appreciate that informative workshop. Moving on to the consent calendar, matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request the item to be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. I will ask if there's anyone on the council that's wishing to pull any consent item?
B9.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to pull a particular item for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for action on the consent calendar excluding item B9.
I still move to approve the consent counter as presented, excluding B9.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar excluding item B9. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Councilwoman Gallegos, item B9.
Bob, I just had a question about the amendment that we're adding for the cost of insurance of $328,000 for expenditure 2018 A and B tax allocation. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that? I'm not real sure.
Okay, which, which fund are we looking at? I apologize.
It's on the first page of the report.
On the first page.
And it's on the last page of the printout, where it said that we're amending for the cost of insurance, $328,000.
The cost of-
Debit service fund?
Of issuance?
Cost of issuance, I'm sorry, yeah, that's for the, for the bond. When we refunded the bonds, we didn't know, the current budget didn't know what the cost of issuance was going to end up being. So after we went through the whole process, you know, all the, all the reports determined what it was, and it ended up being $328,000. So to be able to post these costs now in the general ledger, we have to add the budget item of $328,000.
Okay, so that's why it was put in the amendment part of the revised budget?
Yes, uh-huh, yes. Last, this is last year's.
That was my only question.
You said insurance, that's what I couldn't-
Sorry.
That's what, that part that was thrown me.
Any other questions regarding item B9? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move to approve B9 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item B9 from the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C1, this is to ratify a resolution approving the Proposition 68 program application for statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds. Yvette.
Good evening, Mayor Madellin, members of the council, members of the public. My name's Yvette Iraeta, I'm the grants administrator. I want to start by saying that it was extremely gratifying and uplifting to be at the groundbreaking for Pan Am Park this afternoon, or this morning. After, you know, all the hours that go into a grant application, and all the pieces, all the work that a department has to do to execute the project. It does take some time. That grant in particular was submitted in 2016. And, you know, two and a half years later, we see the development of, of the park facility. So just extremely gratifying and uplifting. Because we know that parks make life better, and it takes a lot of dollars to be able to make parks, to make parks and to make lives better. So we come before you with a request to, to approve a resolution to allow city staff to submit a grant application under the state's Proposition 68. This is a statewide park development and community revitalization program. I am grateful and glad that California voters in 2018 approved this bond measure to allocate millions of dollars to the potential for developing new parks across the state. I will turn it over to Deborah, we'll give you more details about the, the grant. And then we'll talk about the specific project that we, we are intending to, to submit the application for.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Deborah McKenzie, Program Manager with the Grants Department. I'm just going to share a little bit about the Prop 68 program, and in that, the grant application that we're submitting. So as Yvette mentioned, this is a large investment that the state is making. It's believed to be the largest in California history, and possibly the largest in U.S. history. So the intent is to release competitive grants. Both cities, counties, as well as nonprofit organizations are eligible to apply. There is about $250 million that's available in this round. There's about $650 million that's available overall. The next round will be the remainder, about $395,000, and that just needs to be a part of the state budget before they release that. The grant applications, the maximum that the city can apply for is 8.5 million. And there is no match requirement. If we have a match, great, but there's no requirement, and there's no added points or benefit if we provide a match. There are a number of different types of projects that are eligible, and these are listed in priority area. So their first priority is they want to see new parks created. Second to that is to expand an existing park, and last is to renovate, and is, blah, an existing park. And of those projects, they must include at least one recreation feature to be eligible. And so I'll give you some examples of recreation features. Aquatic center, pools, splash pad, athletic fields for soccer, baseball, softball, athletic courts, community gardens, community recreation center, if it's adjacent to a park, a dog park, jogging, those kinds of things. So the grant application has to include at least one recreation feature. In addition, they will also fund what they're calling major amenities, or major support amenities. And these are other types of projects that could be near the recreation feature. For example, having restrooms, concession stand, doing parking, or lighting. So things that can support whatever the recreation feature is. And then, as I mentioned, major support amenities by themselves are not eligible. They have to be attached to something recreational. So that is it for my portion of the presentation. The last thing that I'll add is, I did mention there's a round two. The, the project that we're going to present is looking at doing a renovation. Round two, the $390 million, there is a specific set aside of $130 million specific to renovations and expansions. So if, for some reason, we're not successful in round one, there is some money that's specific to the type of project that we're presenting for round two.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you very much for the work that you do, very important work. I echo your sentiments about today's opening of the children's park there. So is there a component here where the community gets an opportunity to voice their opinion about what we want to do, how we're going to do it? What, what's the community's role? For instance, I noticed that, okay, you're going to work on Rotary Park, excuse me. But if there was a new park that was going to be developed, do we ask the community to give us their opinions about what they would see, they would like to see there, or?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia, let me explain and continue with the presentation, and we'll get to that. So the, the project was selected by our Parks Department. Evaluating the application and the requirements, and also our needs, the, the Parks Department staff made a recommendation to grants to propose Sunrise Rotary Park and Sport Complex under this application, for various reasons. And of course, Park staff can, can provide additional information as needed. But my understanding is that this was a development that was started over a decade ago, and it hasn't been fully developed. There has, there have been other applications submitted, they haven't been, they weren't successful in the past. So we're going to try again, under this proposition, to try to get funding to continue the development. So although Park staff selected this project, the application requires that the community assist in the development of the design and specify what amenities are most desired, so that we can incorporate that into the application. So some of the features that can be put into this park include potentially developing a soccer field, a championship soccer field, with sideburns, softball field, restrooms, concession building, picnic shades, a play area, playground for tots and youth. A pedestrian bridge is feasible also on this, at this site. Double bay parking lot, staff and disabled parking lot, walking pathways. Parks has consulted with the architecture firm, a design firm in the past, under other applications. And so this is what has been proposed and determined to be feasible on this park. So what we have done, or what, in, in collaboration with Park staff, has developed a survey. And that survey is found online on our website.
Yvette, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before we go there, Councilwoman Gallego has a question, and I have a follow-up after that.
I just wanted to answer Councilwoman Garcia's question really fast, too. This park design was, it was, Yvette said decades ago, and it was considered by the Parks and Rec Commission. They had a commission that had a lot of say what went in that. We no longer have that, but they were part of the community. Each council member had the Park and Rec Commission, or, they weren't commissioners, Don, what were they?
It was just people in the area.
And they had a lot of say of-
Certain on that board as well.
Yeah, Donald was on the board on how to develop this, so there was a lot of say. It's just there was no funding.
Parking advisory board.
That's it, park and advisory board. There was not, no funding for it. So it's, it's been in the plans, it's just, there has not been money or grants out there. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So for the, for the cost of this, for all the elements, and forgive me if I'm jumping ahead, but my question is, is it an all or nothing with the grant? Or would they possibly, whatever our ask is, give us a portion thereof?
Bring Deborah back?
So there is the possibility that they would give us a portion of what we-
So it's not an all or nothing?
Right.
Okay, well, that's always, that's always good. And, and do we have an estimated cost for what this is here?
I, I-
What our ask in the application is?
Well, I, and I tried to pull this out of John, he was leery of putting a specific number. So he gave me a range of 1.4 to 4.5 million. So we're still tallying from the community meetings what amenities we'd actually put into the project. And so that will determine really what the, the ask is.
And I know that you fill out a fantastic application. I just wanted to ask, I guess, from the council's point of view, what we can do to make sure that that application is the absolute best possible? If, if the Madera Youth Soccer League also has a letter of support, or of course, the Service Club, which is the Rotary, again, my assumption, and I'm sorry if you guys have gone there already, but with these applications, in, in my history, and I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, but the more community involvement, as Councilwoman Garcia had said, the more people that support it, the more names on support letters that show we are all in this together, even if it includes Madera Unified or the County of Madera, my assumption is, is that we've checked off all those boxes, and we have submitted the absolute best application possible to get this done.
What's interesting is, this application's a little bit different from ones that we've seen in the past. It's extremely structured. I think it's going to be very competitive, and so they want the review process to be as objective as possible. So they're actually not accepting letters of support, but they have listed a requirement that we have three partners identified, one of them being a health partner. So we have done that piece.
Great.
And then, as Yvette mentioned, they're also requiring that we have done at least five community outreach meetings to get input. So part of the application is, they want to know, you know, how do we connect with the people that were part of giving feedback? You know, how did we run those meetings? How are we sure that we're diverse and broad in the feedback that we're getting? So I, I don't want to say that there's nothing we need from council, because that's not, that's not always the case. But in terms of the letters of support piece, they're very structured on, on what they're looking for.
Understand, thank you. I just, again, this, this is certainly a team effort. I want to make sure we can all, together, do everything we can to be successful. This is a lot of money.
I think if you spread the word out that we're applying for this grant, it would be wonderful. And that you can direct people to the website to go and, and read our survey and to offer input. We can definitely indicate to the state how many people were engaged in the process, that's one way. And then we're also going around town, visiting groups, taking the survey. The survey basically shows them all of these options, and, and tells them, you know, certain locations where these amenities may be. So they, it asks for feedback as to location, as well as to prioritize which amenities they most want. So if it is ADA parking, we will prioritize that. If it is a soccer field, do they want it to be a championship soccer field, or will any soccer field do? So we're getting that type of feedback in terms of prioritization, in terms of location, and also comments. And I think the number goes a long way. So we have met with some groups already, the soccer leagues, of course, a little bit of a bias towards soccer. But that's this picture right here. A lot of the, the girls in soccer said that soccer, no softball. So we're meeting with Madera youth leaders, with Pan Am seniors yesterday. Seniors, they're supportive of, it's interesting, whenever we meet with seniors, they want to support youth projects. A play area for toddlers, I heard, some of them saying for their grand- A play area for toddlers, I heard, some of them saying for their grandkids. So they're not always thinking about themselves, but they're thinking about their grandkids and, and mostly their grandkids. Not their kids. So we're meeting with also Frank Begone Seniors, Health Net Promotoras, Madera Youth Commission, Noon Rotary, Sunrise Rotary, Camarina Health Group. And we mentioned the soccer leagues. So a minimum of five for Parks and Parks staff. It's, they have a great connection with the groups out there. They were able to organize those meetings in an hour. I mean, we, Deborah asked John and John said done. So it was really nice. So we definitely have the connection. We're going to get that feedback. We're going to prioritize. And we're going to do a cost evaluation for cost competitiveness and then determine how much we should be asking. The maximum is eight million, so we have room. But we definitely want to focus on developing this one park and submit a competitive application. And another thing is that I would encourage council members to reach out to state representatives, let them know that we're submitting an application and to put that support in at the state for us.
Councilman Holly has a question.
Yes, my question is, I notice I've been around a long time though, watch a lot of flyers and stuff. But why don't they reach out to churches? You know, there's a lot of families in churches that goes to these parks. Not that that serves on different boards, but just church groups themselves to where they have a lot of kids in there that has needs and ideas of what they would like to see as well. So what can you guys do to make sure flyers and stuff are reaching these churches?
Thank you for reminding us of that, Councilman. We will definitely improve that. You're right, we don't automatically think about churches and I appreciate the reminder. I will definitely reach out to some of the leaders at the churches and at minimum, direct them to our survey.
Councilman Robinson.
Okay, you said that the first round is for new parks, right?
For all three.
All three, okay. So yeah, three steps, right? So I know we need a new park in northeast of the city by the Persian Elementary. We have a development, you know, Kennedy Estates. A lot of the kids, they play in the streets, which is very dangerous.
I will share that with John and make sure that he evaluates that feasibility under this second round proposals.
Okay, and also, you know, like you said, variety of events, you know, like I was thinking tennis courts and maybe handball courts. And let's see. That's about it. I mean, maybe for a senior citizen, you know, like what's that Italian sports with the balls? They roll it. Yeah. Yeah, and you know, like frisbee or golf.
We did get comments that Madera does need some tennis courts. So probably something to consider if under this proposal or in second round.
And then another thing is, you know, like you can't just go to the skating rink. You know, if they have smooth surfaces on the sidewalk, you know, like for instance, Santa Monica. And, you know, at the beach, they have those sidewalks pretty wide and you have skateboarders and bikers, you know, exercise that people can do. It just don't cause, cost that, that much money.
I see walking path under this proposal, so.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mayor Protan Montes has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, I just had a question about the 8.5 million limit. That was the maximum project that we can have? Or is that for the region? Is that just for the city?
No, that's just for the project, for the ask, the request.
So you can submit, and I'm not saying that, you know, I know it's a lot of work doing that, doing the proposal, but we can submit more than one 8.5 million dollar ask?
You can submit more than one application. We evaluated our capacity and we determined that focusing on one was the most strategic for, for city.
And you mentioned that it's going to be pretty competitive. So I'm assuming other agencies around here are also applying for-
Yeah, we are aware of county also applying for, and we hope that we are both successful.
And I look at kind of my question, I didn't want to know if we're competing with them for the same 8.5, but if we can all submit multiple, then-
Yeah, so that kind of covers our multiple efforts, but.
Thank you.
I know you're trying to get to that slide.
No, I'm, I'm done with my presentation, council, so.
Very informative and very exciting, very, very exciting. That would, that would definitely be a game changer for the city of Madera in that particular area. I mean, there are dozens upon dozens of events out there as well as thousands and thousands of people annually that use that particular park. That's, that's fantastic. We should all cross our fingers and toes. Councilwoman Gallegos.
Just real fast, Yvette, when's the application due?
August 5th.
August 5th, and the award date, do they have a date for that yet?
No award date. I think there's about a two-year timeline to, to spend, so.
Councilman Garcia.
You were mentioning letters of support. And then you mentioned statewide representative.
Yeah, Deborah mentioned that for this application, there is no requirement and it doesn't allow you to submit letters of support. However, they require partnerships. So we have to express that we have, that we're intending to have partnerships. And we've reached out to Camarina Health, that's one of them. And so they have a promotoras program. For example, we can solicit volunteers through that program to promote activities, to come do volunteer projects. So they've committed to being in a partner, being a partner through the development and after the development of the project if we're successful.
So, so my point is that we wouldn't necessarily reach out to our state and assembly members for letters of support?
No, we don't need letters of support. We just want you to remind them that we've submitted an application and to request the support in Sacramento.
Councilman Robinson.
Yeah, so you said you need a letter of support with partnerships, with partnership, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I was thinking United Way, you know, they have programs. Like for instance, you know, right, right, I heard on the radio. Huh? You don't need three?
Yeah, we've already confirmed our three partners. Our application is going to be submitted before or by August 5th. So we've reached out, we've confirmed, we've determined what type of activities, pardon?
Children's Hospital?
No.
They have wellness program also. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this particular item? You know what, Eddie, I don't want to make you come over here. My apologies, but I think we can hear you from there.
What do you ask for, do you have to get that amount? Is that the need or can they say, say ask for 8.5 million, can I get seven?
Yeah, so Deborah explained a little bit earlier that the state will evaluate the application and may potentially award less than the ask. So if we ended up asking for 3 million, there's a possibility that we will get 2 million. And that is why we want to prioritize and get that input from the community to then work on the amenities that are most highly desired.
Okay, so if I ask for 8.5 million, because when I was a kid and I wanted to take my, my parents' car out. My dad had a Cadillac and my mom had a Honda. I would ask for the Cadillac and hope to get the Honda, right? You know, they'd say, I'm going to give you the Cadillac. Here, instead, I'll give you the Honda, right? Makes me happy, makes them happy. Let's do the best for the city, ask for it all. You never know, they might give it to us all.
It makes sense, but as, as grant staff, we make, we evaluate cost effectiveness and just make a determination as to what we think would be competitive when it is actually reviewed. So there is some methodology in submission of the grant application. So wish it was that easy, but it's not.
I agree, I agree. That's why I was asking, Eddie, is this all or nothing? Sometimes there are grants that are, you kind of get the one shot and you want to be very reasonable, you want to be very methodical, and you want to make sure that your application is just prima without being unreasonable. Sometimes when you get to be unreasonable, you just go to the, to the bottom of the stack. But I'll ask if there was somebody else, if you want to mind coming over here to the podium. I let Eddie speak from back there. He has a disability and I didn't want to have to make him come all the way down these steps. But if you would, just come to the podium.
D.J. Becker. I'd like to know if there are any unmet flood control needs that we should be considering. I think they're available for consideration under measure or Proposition 68.
So the program that we're applying under is the statewide park development and community revitalization program. And the priorities under that program are to create a new park, expand an existing park, or renovate an existing park. That is, that would be better suited under a different program under Proposition 68.
I just have a very quick question. That is on the west side of Madera, is that correct? I'm not sure who-
No, no, this is the east side of Madera.
This is the east side, okay.
Yes, Millview School, over off of Tozer, behind Rancho San Miguel.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Of course, no problem. Anyone else have a question? Appreciate the, the public comment and input. With that, I'll bring it back to council if there is no further discussion. Recommendation is by staff, of course, to re-approve the resolution that will allow the city manager to apply to the Prop 68 statewide park development and community revitalization grant program. Second. It's been moved and seconded. We're doing a roll call vote still. We, yes, we are. You let me know when that day comes where I don't have to do that, okay? Roll call vote, please, Zelda.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protan Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madelen?
Yes.
We have quorum. I'm sorry, we have, we have an approval vote.
And I'm not sure, Hilda, for the record, if you want to indicate that Councilman Rodriguez is absent? Is that something you want in the, in the minutes or in the record?
Just announce the actual vote. Six, five, one, with one absent, or, or six, zero, with one absent.
Got it.
Okay, the vote was six, yes. One absent for a six, one vote.
Six, zero. It was a six, zero vote.
Six, zero vote.
You don't, okay, I'm sorry.
Got it, thank you very much. I'm with you, Zelda. I'm with, I'm with you. My training wheels are still on as well. So that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item C2. This is reconsideration of a resolution approving release, disposition, and development agreement executed by Iron Horse MLLC. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Bob Wilson, Executive Director. Health and safety law and the dissolution law allows for the release of agreements from the prior redevelopment agency if you can demonstrate that it is benefit to the taxing entities, either a decrease in liabilities or an increase in revenue. As you may remember, we brought this item before you back in January and it also went to the Oversight Board for approval, but it went up to the Department of Finance and they submitted it back to us and did not approve it stating that, that, that they didn't think that the findings were strong enough to demonstrate that there was a benefit to the taxing entities. And they also put in their denial the opportunity to reconsider it again. So at this time, we're bringing it back to you again. So as a brief reminder, we're talking about the property out on Yosemite in between Elm and Fig Street there. It was sold to Iron Horse back in 2010. The DDA had some requirements on the development and some timelines established with it and also a little monetary reimbursement if the deadlines were achieved. Since that time, the success rate, or the redevelopment agency's successor agency did some underground storage cleanup on the property and it's somewhat delayed the initial development. It was planned to take place right after Rancho San Miguel. By the time the underground cleanup had taken place, it seemed like some of the momentum of that project had disappeared. Iron Horse sold the property to Mohamed Latif and Mohamed Latif now is selling the property to Armstrong Development. Armstrong Development, doing their due diligence review, looked at the title of the property and saw the DDA on there and has now asked for the release of the DDA so that they can go ahead and, and develop their, their proposal is 27,000-foot commercial center out there with, with parking. So at this time, we've, we've strengthened the resolution stating that, you know, demonstrating more strongly that the Armstrong has, has expressed their intent not to purchase the property if the DDA remains on, on the property. And so that would obviously be, be, you know, a 27,000-square-foot commercial center will be a big boost to the taxing entities out there in revenue. And so the, the resolution just kind of highlights all the items there. That they've, they've gone to the planning commission. They've had five CUPs approved just to demonstrate that the, the project is, is very serious and, and in motion. So at this time, you know, staff recommends that we reconsider the resolution and approve it and send it back through the Oversight Board and back up to the Department of Finance again. And hopefully be more successful this time.
Let's hope. Councilwoman Gallegos has a question.
Bob, did you get a chance to see if you were able to meet and confer with them?
No, this, 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 this opportunity isn't, wasn't a meet and confer. They didn't offer that on this item. That was, you know, that's the, the props are, you know, more likely to receive a meet and confer. This one, they, when they just sent it back, the option was to, to reconsider it. So that is, we're taking that option.
So on our, our part, we just did some changing of our wording?
Yes.
To strengthen the whole resolution?
Strengthen the resolution.
We definitely had to strengthen the resolution. One of the biggest issues that, that the DOF had was that the disposition and development agreement provides that if the owner did not comply with the requirements, that the city could take, or the successor agency, former redevelopment agency, could take the property back. And the prior submission included the fact that, that, that it was different. And they said, well, that's not what the grant deed says. The grant deed says that the city has the right to take the property back. So why are you just releasing the property? Why don't you take the property back? I asked the same question of Mr. Wilson and we talked through it. And he felt, based on where things are now, that there is an impending actual development on the site and not to delay that development and that it would be more beneficial to try to do it this way. And so there's lots of detail, lots of background. What I like to do is to try to, what I call, tell the story on what happened here and what's at, what's at stake. And that it, that if this property, if DOF says no and the project is not, does not come to fruition, then the city may have to consider taking the property back. And at that point, it's, there's no taxes at all. So there's no benefit to the taxing entities. So is it the project that the DDA required? No, it's not the 40,000-square-foot project. It's a much more streamlined project. One of the things that would have been helpful, but I think at this time, Mr. Wilson wants to proceed with submitting it, would have been a, an appraisal of all, of all the sites. And there was some, some appraisal done, but it was not complete. So it was better not to submit it. That could theoretically be something that DOF asked. They did not ask that when they sent their termination letter. But they did say, they, they did say, go ahead and, you, you may request a reconsideration, but we'll need more information to determine how the taxing entities, that includes the city, the school district, the county, library, et cetera, how the taxing entities will benefit by this action of the successor agency. If you approve this resolution tonight, it would go to the Oversight Board and then from then on to the DOF.
Okay, great, thank you, Hilda.
And with that, Bob, I certainly don't mind releasing the DDA. That seems to make sense, but this- sense, but this piece of property has kind of changed hands over and over. Is there any timeline stipulation as far as this development? I know they show good faith and they seem to be pretty serious, but is there anything in the contract that says development must happen within X number of days or months?
You know, the contract stated that the development had to be completed just last April, April of 2019, and if it was completed in that time, they would have been reimbursed, I think it was like $93,000 for, I believe a sewer or storm drain was, was written in the DDA. I mean, the property was actually sold for fair market value, and the DDA was more or less put in place to really encourage development, to proceed, and, you know, to move forward and not sit there vacant, which it, which it ended up doing. So at this point, you know, we're at the successor rate, the project area benefits from, you know, moving forward with this now. If Armstrong backs out of the deal because the DDA has not released the property, you know, it's going to sit there vacant again, or like Ms. Montoya mentioned, if the redevelopment agency want to try to revest it, then that's probably going to be quite a lawsuit and, you know, to try and get that property back from them again, since.
I think the city would have liked to take, just to think, I mean, there's a positive side to this application.
We're just, with redevelopment, that's exactly what we're trying to encourage, is to develop something.
Right.
Not to continue to sell to other people so that they can land bank and have it sit there as a piece of lot. So that's, that's really my concern, is to make sure that we are selling to people that are serious about development and moving forward. That's why I asked about the timeline.
Yeah, that was the original intent, too, yes.
Any other questions of council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
See, move to approve item C2 as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C2. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madellin?
Yes.
That's a six, oh, vote. It passes.
Thank you, Bob.
For the record, it was six, yes, with Councilmember Rodriguez absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item C3. Item C3 is consideration of a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application, $100,000, to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Public Benefit Grant Program and authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents. Ms. Yeretta, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I come back with a similar request. This time is to approve a resolution to allow staff to submit an application to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District under the Public Benefit Grant Program. The notes that staff gave me say that if you ever wondered where your $19 surcharge fee on your vehicle registration fee goes to, it's to fund this type of program. So it funds the Public Benefit Grant Program at least 23% of that program. So the J, this long acronym, SJVAPCD, offers grants to provide funds for the purchase of new alternative fuel vehicles, infrastructure, and the development of advanced transit and transportation systems. So this entity focuses on developing air quality in our region, and there are funds to apply for cleaner emission vehicles that agencies that are eligible, such as cities, can then incorporate into their fleet. Under this program, we can apply for $20,000 per vehicle and a maximum of five vehicles. The maximum grant amount under this program is only 100,000, not 8.5 million like the other one, but nevertheless, and on this one, we will be asking for the 100,000. So I'm looking at you.
Councilmember Robinson has a question.
Yeah, so I was thinking that we have five vehicles, and, and I receive a message from one of the traffic officer walking the beat in the heat. You know, I believe that he should have, or that person should have electric vehicles so they can do their job.
You're talking about the parking enforcement officer?
Uh huh.
And I believe that we have taken note of that. It's been under discussion. I'm sure it'll continue to be under discussion under PD, and determine when we are, we do have available funding to make that. We'll probably come back and give you some factual data as to the pros and cons, and council can provide direction thereafter.
Oh, thank you.
But for this, I should have mentioned that this request came through Public Works, the city's fleet division. So the applications are accepted once a year, and they are awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. We think that we have a really good opportunity for accessing this funding if we submit our application quickly, so we want to do that. And the proposal would be to, to apply for five vehicles, two for the police department, two for Parks and Community Services Department, and one for wastewater treatment plant. And my understanding is that the police department wants to use some of their vehicles for events and transporting goods, as well as Parks and Community Services for the same purpose, for events, transporting the public to some of the events, and the goods that are needed for, for certain events. This is what these vehicles would look like. They're golf cart vehicles. The one on the top is the one with the compartment for the goods, and the one on the bottom, the right side, is more suited for the transportation of people. So I'm asking that council approve the resolution to allow city staff to work on the application and submit the application. We would then be ordering the vehicles, and fleet does have experience with this entity. They also send notes saying that it's, it's very efficient working with, with the San Joaquin District. They're very efficient in the processing of reimbursement, so it isn't money that we necessarily have to upfront and wait a year or two to get reimbursed. Overall, the, the agency has $5 million, and they also are telling us that they have an application backlog, but we, we think that if we are approved, we would be approved in the fall or early 2020. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Yvette. Any questions, Yvette, on this grant application? Mayor Protem Montes?
And this is probably for the, for the next grant application that you submit to us, but do they have grants for maybe like the charging stations? I know those are smaller vehicles, but you could use that money for plug-in vehicles that, or electric vehicles that the fleet would use, right?
Definitely. It's for low emission vehicles.
Use it for, for like charging stations, or is it only for the vehicles?
My understanding is that it's only for the vehicles. It's vehicles, vehicles, 20,000 for the vehicles. You have to have the capacity to charge those vehicles. I could be mistaken, and Jorge, if you can provide additional information.
Charging station.
You can plug those into just like a washer/dry, right, 220 or something? Plug it into the wall.
My understanding is it's for vehicles specifically.
Sanction cord.
Sanction cord, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. The vehicles will be charged with existing 120 current outlets that are at the, each site, police department, wastewater treatment plant, and at parks.
Second, we have charging stations.
Yes, charging stations are eligible. Applications are accepted once per year. Perhaps next year, we'll do some charging stations. We need to know the locations. Are these charging stations for the public or for electric vehicles, or?
For electric vehicles. No, okay. No, yeah, I'm sure if we put them somewhere where the public can access, I'm just ideas.
It's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, we're working on a project to develop charging stations in the near future.
We are, we are. We approved a contract with NG, and I think we're waiting for that workshop and information to see with cost savings and different ways that we could use things like solar lights, charging stations, things of that nature in the, in the community.
So we are, our next meeting, NG's going to come, and we'll be doing a workshop on the first meeting in August.
Any other questions for Yvette? Anyone from the audience wishing to ask any questions or speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I so moved to approve C3 as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C3. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madellin?
Yes.
The vote is six yays, one absent, so it passes with six, zero.
Thank you very much, Hilda. And Jorge and Yvette, thank you once again. Exciting things. Item C4, this is consideration of a resolution authorizing the investment of monies in the local agency investment fund and designing, and designating the positions authorized to sign the account.
Good evening, Mayor, and to the councilmembers. Susan O'Hara, interim Director of Financial Services. This is basically a housekeeping item. The city has been investing in the, in the LEAF, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund, for many, many years. For those that aren't aware, are familiar with that organization, it's a voluntary investment alternative that local governments pull their money in, and it's administered by the state treasurers, investment gurus, the people that are really good at that type of thing. The interest rates or the return rates are comparable, not quite as high as you could get out on the open market, but they're well-versed in what types of investments that governments can invest in, and they're very careful with our money, and it's, it's an overnight turnaround. We can put money in today and pull it out tomorrow if we need it, not a lot of paperwork. Unfortunately, we haven't had a resolution updating who can sign on that account in many years. And the four positions that were on the last resolution, one of the positions, we have changed the name on it from city administrator to city manager. The community development coordinator position is vacant at the moment, and then I'm currently filling the other two positions, and we need two-person involvement on all our transactions. So we don't have two people currently on the signature card to sign. So this is merely a request to add the Director of Human Resources as the fourth person so that we can continue to conduct business with life.
Great, thank you so much, Susan. Any questions regarding this housekeeping item? Seeing none, I will call for action on this item.
So move to approve C4?
Please.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on this particular item?
No.
Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
So move to approve item C4 as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C4. If we can have a roll call vote, please, Hilda.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madellin?
Yes.
We have six yays and one absent, so the vote passes with a six, zero vote.
Thank you so much, Hilda, and Susan, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I see no admin reports, so I'll move on to council reports, starting at my far right with Councilman Derek Robinson.
Yes, I was happy to be at the ribbon cutting at the Pan Am Park, and it was very pleasant to see a bright and colorful playground with all the new equipment, and all the kids, there's about 50 kids there. And, and I had mentioned that my daughter wanted to ride down the slide, and I picked her up at the Foster Center because she's in camp all week, and so I'd be going over there, and she got on the slide, and she went, so it was real nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice words. I think that's absolutely fantastic. Glad you were there. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Anything to report?
Councilman Garcia?
I have a request that we conduct a workshop for the city council and the public to comment on project labor agreements for preacher projects using public funds in the city of Madera. If we can make that happen, I would appreciate that.
Councilman Holly?
Yes. I attended my first MTCT meeting today, and never knew what they were all about, but I learned a lot. We're talking about this filling station that's going to be set at Caltrans building over there on Elm, for free for a minute or two, so when they get it hooked up, y'all can go get it for free. Also, I thought it was a nice thing. Also, this coming Friday, from right, Mr. Mayor, 10 o'clock, we're going to have our ribbon cutting or widening, or talk about the widening of from Avenue 17 to Avenue 12. So that's going to be happening this Friday at 10 at Rotary Park. All are invited. And future is going to go from 12 all the way up to 7, so keep that in mind as well. We're going to widen on Madera Highway. That's all I have to report.
Glad you were there. Thank you so much for filling in and, and attending. We appreciate your input. Mayor Protem Montes?
Sounds like you guys have a lot of fun. I wish I could go to all those meetings. I have nothing to report.
We tired.
Yeah. Exactly. You all have plenty of time. And I have nothing to report. Thank you, everybody, for being with us this evening. I appreciate all of your input, and this time I will ask for an announcement from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and council. There are two items on the agenda this evening. G2 is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6, agency-designated Representative Arnoldo Rodriguez, unrepresented positions, Director of Parks and Community Services, Director of Financial Services, and Public Works Operations Director. And G3, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957, title city manager.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Rodriguez, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Reporting back on closed session, item G2: Conference with Labor Negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Agency Designated Representative Arnoldo Rodriguez, Unrepresented Positions, Director of Parks, Director of Financial Services, Public Works Operations Director, No Reportable Action. Item G3: Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Title City Manager, No Reportable Action. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that, and with that meeting adjourned.